This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision E of the Ralph M. Browns Act, California Government Code Section 549508ET sequence, Series Resolution Number 2021-101, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was on the posted agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city council meetings by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Include on the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. A clerk may read written comment into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will also be distributed to city council and kept on file as part of the official record of the city council meeting. Welcome everybody to the city council regular meeting today, November 22nd, 2021. I call it to order, and if I can please get the roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino, here. Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. Everybody please stand by for invocation by Pastor Scott Elliott, Big Valley Grace Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you, Lord, for city of Series and just the great heritage and history in the Central Valley, the impact that it has on the larger area. And Father, we pray for the meeting tonight. Would each person who serves in city here, Lord, be encouraged by the support that they have from the people that live here? Pray that tonight would be filled with thankfulness for all the ways that you've been at work in this city and the lives that are being impacted here. Pray for homes this week that gather for Thanksgiving. You watch over them, protect them, keep them safe. Keep safe those that travel out of the area and those that travel in. We ask that you continue to be with our students, our kids, schools, as they continue to work through some of the challenges that the last two years have put before them. We ask that you continue to provide blessing to the city of Series. And we pray for tonight just to be a great meeting of civility, of sharing of ideas, of listening, and most of all, that it would be honoring to you and productive to the city of Series and the people that live here. I ask all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
We'll begin with presentations. Today, we have a proclamation declaring Saturday, November 27th, 2021, a Small Business Saturday in the City of Series. Brandy Meyer, will you please step up to the podium? Small Business Saturday in the City of Series. Whereas the City of Series, California celebrates and supports local small businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in our local economy and community. And whereas small businesses employ nearly one out of two jobs in our country's economy. And where a small business contributes positively to our local community by supplying residents with jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas small businesses play a crucial role in the overall economy health of the United States. And whereas the city of Series supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of Series, California, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small business merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
On behalf of the Chamber, the Series Chamber of Commerce, I accept the proclamation, and I thank you and look forward to the support from our city and our community and our citizens very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Citizens Communications, Communications, excuse me. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopt the rules, allow no more than five minutes. Resolution Number 2007-106 for expression of non-agenda items. Matters on the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must therefore adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber's doors. And we will begin with in-person comments. I do have some yellow slips. I believe I have only one person for Citizens Communications as far as the yellow slip. Lucky. Come on up, sir.
Hello. I won't take too much of your time. I live here off of the East Gate area, off of Bogan Villa. And those of you that are familiar with the area, it's a kind of a new area, very nice neighborhood. I have a problem that comes on Fiddle Leaf and Bogan Villa, that corner right there. And I think the police department probably has had calls from me regarding that area. It's becoming a nuisance. I've lived there for 11 years, and it's getting bigger and bigger. And now it's blown up so bad that that area is, is, there's people just parking there overnight and just throwing trash, you know, and they park, they keep their music on late at night. And I've called the police department, but there's only, they can't really do anything about it because they can't. The people see the car coming from a mile away. They hide their marijuana, they throw their liquor away. And then late at night, they rev up their cars and they shoot down that Fiddle Leaf road. And there's old people walking late at night, it's early morning, and they're constantly doing it. And it's not just one person, one car. It's like you would not believe how many cars come out there. And trash has been thrown there. It's total trash. I pick it up every couple of days, but then it's back again. And it's, it's, I've called code enforcement, and they said that there's really nothing they can do about it. Also, UDACs, I've recorded them, I have them on my camera, I can show them to anybody throughout the day. I'm talking about daytime. They're not even, these people are not even afraid in the daytime. All throughout night, condoms everywhere. So it is, it's horrible. It's dirty. And I just kind of wanted to bring it to you guys's attention because I live there, I see it every day. So I would like for the city to actually do something about it. And when we bought the house, it was originally a barrier at the end of Fiddle Leaf, those cones, not the cones, but the other barriers. For some reason, it's time that they got taken out for some reason, I don't know why. Now it's a, it's a, they just drive right into that dead end. And car after car, two, three cars a night. And I've called police late at night, but like I said, there's, they can't really do anything. They turn the music down by the time the car, the police car comes there. They see it coming, you know, from, from East Gate. And oh, we're not doing anything. And of course, police can't really do anything. There's no signs posted that say, oh, no parking after dark or something, or even, like I said, it's a simple thing. If you put a barrier at the end of the road, because it's a dead-end road anyways, the problem is solved. But if any of you guys have time tomorrow, or anytime, we'll take a look at that corner. It is filthy. My kids can't even go out there and play because it's so nasty that, you know. And so I just wanted to kind of bring it to you guys's attention to see if you guys can do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucky. City manager, is there anything that you can possibly just look into and maybe reach out to the Lucky? I'll hold his slip information here for you. Thank you, Lucky, appreciate it. Let me double check these yellow sheets. Doesn't look like anybody else is going to speak on Citizen Communication. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak during Citizen Communications? Is there anybody on? I'm sorry, did I get two hands? Go ahead. You can go ahead first, yes.
Evening, everybody. My name is Lee Brandt, and I just thought I'd put a face with a name. I've been Zooming for the past two years, year and a half, you know, whatever. And I just want to wish each and every one of you a happy Thanksgiving. And don't forget what you're thankful for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Vega, and my husband and I live at 704 Monique Court, No Man's Land. I just read in the paper today that there is a gentleman that is using the N-word, and he might be a city council-
Ms. Vega, if you want to talk during the District Four seat portion of this, you can actually talk about that.
Okay.
If you want to wait. Is that okay with you? It'll probably be best.
So what is this section for?
It is District Four seat. But do you understand why you couldn't talk? Because the matter is not on posted on the agenda. So once we open it up for District Four seat, you can discuss that. Yeah. Yeah, you can say anything else outside of the agenda during Citizen Communication.
The other thing I wanted to say was, we live right by River Road, and the cars are going very fast. And some of the neighbors have called the police, and we haven't received a response. Is this the right time to say that?
That is the perfect time. I'll have the city manager look into that. If you could please provide your information before you leave today. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to talk Citizen Communication that's here today? Let's go for Zoom. Do we have anybody on Zoom with their hands raised? I'm sorry, did you have, Yakeley, I'm sorry, did you raise your hand? I did not see you. Would you like to speak, sir? Come on up. Thank you.
Dean Yakeley, Series. I got a couple of items. One of them is, I should probably direct to you, Mayor. About two meetings back, I brought up an issue about not answering citizens' questions. And particularly had to do with, I believe, law enforcement not taking care of the code after code enforcement goes home as far as, you know, vendors or anybody on the street or anything like that. And I was told that these particular items should be put on an agenda. And you said a couple of meetings back that you would get back to me on that, and we would try to see with the city attorney if we can put something on the agenda when a person asked a question in the city and they don't get it answered, it just wavers into No Man's Land, kind of like where this lady lives. And nothing gets ever answered, so the public can find out the answer. And I want to know, when somebody comes up here, do they have to continuously ask to have something put on agenda to get an answer so the citizens can find out? Evidently, we haven't got to that point yet, and I don't have an answer about putting something on the agenda. I was recently told by Linda Rhino that they got some VIP people, or VIPS people, volunteers to go around and take the place of code enforcement and maybe ease the load on law enforcement on these minor violations that people do around the city each and every day. And again, you know, I don't know what these VIPS guys are going to do. Can they write citations? What's the limit to what they are going to do? And in the meantime, till someone gets out there and answers our question, we're kind of in limbo. And at the same time, you know, what's their powers? What are they going to be able to do to alleviate these problems we have around town that continue that law enforcement can't take care of all of them, and code enforcement goes home at four, 4:30 in the afternoon? So at night, somebody has to take care of these problems. They're just growing all the time, you know? And all you people that live here, you know, and the people behind me that live here, I'm glad to see you at night, but you need to come every time they have a street council meeting. If there's nobody here, you're, or you, to find somebody to come. Because without representation, we don't get nowhere. And we need answers. We haven't had answers for several council groups before, you know? And we're making some improvement, but it's still really slow. It's been slow since I've been here for over 30 years. And it's making some headway, but we need to make more, and we need answers. And the citizens want to ask the council a question, we need answers. We don't want to be put off till sometime later, get some side remark about how it's taken care of. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yakeley. Wanted to make sure there is nobody else here in the council that would like to speak on Citizen Communication. Moving on to Zoom. Any hands raised?
Yes, Mayor. First person is Ben Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, I'll unmute your mic.
Yeah. Good evening, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak regarding John Osgood. Remember the last time I was there, probably around May or-
If you would like to speak during that item, it'd probably be best, if you don't mind. Hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Because we can't take, can't take any actions on, during Citizen Communication, so it'd be best that you speak when we open up the item.
Okay.
Which is, which is next, by the way.
Okay, I'll just, for the next item then.
You got it. Thank you, Ramon, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
There are no other hands raised.
Any emails? Okay. Public comment period is now closed. Moving on. District Four seat. Reconsideration of Resolution Number 2021-117, appointing a member to fill the District Four council vacancy, city attorney. Eleanor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, that's, the title's it. It's a very straightforward item for your consideration tonight. You're able to do it because Mr. Osgood has not been sworn in yet. Then procedurally, before you consider the resolution of reconsideration, someone needs to procedurally make a motion to reconsider the item. And that would have been someone who was voted in the majority at the last meeting.
Okay. Counsel, this is an item that I brought forward at my request, and I'm asking for reconsideration of Resolution Number 2021-7, appointing a member to fill the District Four vacancy. Is any council member that would like to make a motion? If not, I will.
I will move to-
Reconsider the item.
Reconsider the item.
Okay. Can I get a roll call?
If you need a second.
Needs a second? I'll second. I get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey. Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With that, you can begin debate on the, on the item.
Okay, so I motion that we, I motion rescinding Resolution Number 2021-117, adopting a member to fill the District Four vacancy as a result of the resignation and proceed with the direction from the council on how to alternatively fill the vacancy. I get a second? Okay. So this is, this is my motion. If you have anything would like to debate this or along with the-
Second.
Okay. Can I get the roll call, please? I can't, I couldn't hear you, that's why. Okay, now-
Excuse me, now you can have your debate.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so yes, that's, that's going to be, so what I'm proposing, that we rescind the resolution, and that we propose that on December 10th, oh, excuse me, on December 6th, we have a special city council meeting for a direct appointment. That's kind of what I'm, kind of what I'm leaning towards. This would be the following Monday.
Yeah, I would be fine with-
Okay. Councilmember.
Let me understand that the motion is to have a special council meeting on December the 6th, appoint someone, decide how the appointment's going to be filled, to appoint somebody directly.
It's twofold. You'd be rescinding the appointment and then having, giving us that direction if that's the way you choose to-
It's just two things in one. We'll be rescinding, and then my direction is, counsel, that we figure out how we fill that vacancy. It might call for a special meeting to, for a direct appointment.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I understand that voting to rescind the appointment of Mr. Osgood. What I don't understand clearly in my mind, the December 6th meeting is what?
So we can make the decision, because we have until December 10th to fill the District Four seat. So on the 6th, we can reconvene.
The December 6th meeting, we're going to appoint someone or decide how to fill the vacant, which is it?
We can either have that discussion now, or we can have that discussion then, correct?
You can decide the threshold question of how, if you don't, if you rescind the appointment of Mr. Osgood, you can decide, give us direction, how you want to fill it in that case.
Well, that's basically, Mr. Casey, that's my recommendation. My recommendation is to do a direct appointment on December 6th.
I'm, I'm sorry, the class, you looking at me, I can-
I'm so sorry. But what I'm suggesting is that my motion is that we proceed to, on December 6th, and hold a special meeting for a direct appointment.
As my direct appointment.
That's my direct. So if the council agrees. Ms. Rhino.
Is this something that we can actually talk about tonight rather than wait until December 6th? Because time is running out. If we can't agree on December 6th, what we're going to do has to be made by December the 10th. So can, can we actually talk about his recommendation, which would be a direct appointment to not-
Yes, you can talk about that in the context of rescinding the resolution from the last meeting, yes.
Okay.
You just can't make that appointment tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not making the appointment today.
So when you're, when you're speaking about a direct appointment, do you have anyone in mind, or?
Oh, that's my question to you. Is that somebody that I should bring up today? Or I would rather do it on-
You certainly can.
Councilmember. See, suggesting that we separate the two issues.
Either way, yes. You can vote on the resolution and then give us direction after that, correct?
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's, this motion and rescinding the resolution first is what you're suggesting.
I withdraw your previous motion, finish your discussion, then open it up to the public, and then bring it back for your motion and direction.
Okay, so I will motion rescind Resolution Number 2021-117, appointing a member to fill the District Four vacancy as a result of the resignation.
I thought we already-
Mayor, if you're inclined to split the items in two, I would recommend that you withdraw the motion that you began.
Withdraw the motion?
Withdraw that motion, finish council discussion, open it up to the public, bring it back to the council, vote on the resolution or not, and then give your direction after that.
Okay. So I will rescind motion, I will-
Withdraw.
Withdraw motion rescinding Resolution Number 2021-117, appointing a member to fill the District Four vacancy as a result of the resignation proceeding with direction from council on how to alternatively fill the vacancy.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Aye.
For Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
You're just, you're just-
We're not at the point we need to vote. You simply withdrew your motion. We never voted on a motion or had a second, therefore, there was no actual motion.
Okay.
You withdrew your motion, that part's over. Now we need to open up to the public and discuss this, this, whatever we're going to do with the-
And we'll do that. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll open it up to the public. I do have yellow cards here. I will start with John Warren.
Good evening, counsel. John Warren, District One. As I understand what just took place here, kind of back to square one, and you have not decided to reconsider the appointment.
They're now taking discussion on potentially reconsidering the resolution at this point.
Hey. If council does decide to revisit the appointment, I would suggest that you open the application process up again tomorrow morning and let it run for several days and see if there is another interested party in District Four that might want to apply for the position, quite possibly going to the end of the month, November 30th, which would leave eight or nine days for possibly another citizen to step forward and apply, or maybe, maybe there'll be several. I think this item has caused quite a stir in the community, and there may be some more interest in the District Four seat. Then, on December the 6th, conduct your special meeting and decide from that group that would be available. If not, either of those, then I suggest that you just leave in place what you've already done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak? Wendy?
Thank you, Mayor Lopez and members of the council. My name is Wendy Byrd. I'm president of Desto Stanislas NAACP. Series is one of the cities in our county that we serve. The NAACP raises questions about the appointment of any elected official practices hatred, bigotry, misogyny, and racist terminology which makes specific ethnic and gender groups feel demeaned. On February the 8th, 2021, Mr. Osgood's podcast, he attempted to rationalize his repeated use of the N-word, which we feel is offensive as well as ignorant. While Mr. Osgood did raise some good points about city governance, it appears that he still lacks the temperament, cultural sensitivity, character, and political judgment to be in a position of authority. We all are emboldened to move forward to create a better tomorrow. We believe that civility is the cornerstone of our democracy and of our governance. We have expectations. We believe that our leaders should lead by example. I'm going to spend the next few moments of my time, if I may, playing for you what I heard on the podcast.
He's been beyond him, and now the entire music genre is under attack.
No, but something about, about him saying basically- And then, number one, not hearing what number three said about two, says huh? And then, three yells out, take care of that [BLEEP] ass. Are we even allowed to spell it? I mean, you know.
You should have been like, [INAUDIBLE].
Gastro, gastro, gastro. To hell with Facebook. I've already disclosed on this program, my great uncle held Klan meetings in Whitmore Park in Series, okay? I've already disclosed on this show that, that while family members of mine are engaged in actual racism for many years, I'm not- for many years, I'm not a racist and I can use the word to describe the color black in a foreign language or just general cultural slang. I'm not calling anyone a name when I use the word to describe what that word is.
Right, but they flip out even over that.
And some people are going to flip out right now.
Words you can't even say, and then you say the word just so they know what word you're not supposed to say. You said the word.
Well, you get the point and this conversation go over, over a extended period of time, fifteen, twenty minutes. If this is indeed the voice of Mr. Osgood, is this really the type of person that you want representing your city? I think the citizens of Series deserve better and I, we do find this very, very. Thank you.
Thank you. Believe it was, you said Ms. Vega, right? Come on up, please. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Isn't the resolution, the public hearing about how we're going to fill the seat, we don't already voted, Mr. Osgood? Need to hear. And isn't that what the resolution is about, public hearing is how we're going to fill the seat on December the sixth? We don't need to hear any more stuff about Mr. Osgood, already voted on that.
Mr. Casey, the conversation now is, is whether people are in favor or not in favor of rescinding the appointment. That's the conversation that we're having now. We have not got to the conversation about if we were to rescind it, how we would replace him.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have one more yellow slip, Samuel White. Did we get that microphone fixed? I think we're going to give you another mic, I believe. No, that's fixed, okay, thank you.
This one is working.
That was good, thank you.
First of all, we want to say we're glad for the opportunity to be here to speak. We recognize the mayor, city council meeting, law enforcement, safety constituents that are here. I am one of the board of directors of the Stanislaus County Veterans Foundation, United States Air Force veteran, a Gulf War veteran. I'm also the armed service person for the NAACP, which is inclusive of this city as well. The words, first of all, let me also say this, I'm also a parliamentarian. So as I was listening to you gentlemen go back and forth, there should have been a point of order called. The consent agenda is what I might recommend to you for your next meeting on December sixth to decide what you want to do about this individual being appointed as possibly one of your council members. There was a vote, was a motion made by the mayor. After the motion was made, there was a second, there was a roll call, then there was also the recalling of the motion. And then there was the rescinding of it, which should have happened at that time. Should have been a call for the question and then after a call for the question, a discussion. And then the item should have been tabled for December the sixth, where you could make a consent agenda upon you having a quorum to then go ahead and discuss what action you would take. So I hope I've said something that'll help you, okay? Now, as to this individual, Mr. John Osgood, he should not be sworn in, as I see, as a council member for several reasons, that his verbiage is ruled divisive and the First Amendment did not cover inflammatory speech that includes obscenity and speeches that would include imminent lawless actions. I heard what he said, I listened to that podcast. And he said the N-word was a part of community slang. I would look at any of you up there, I'd say, is that a part of your culture of community slang? I think not, I think not. This is the wrong message that this individual is sending out to this community in Series, Stanislaus County, period. His words are divisive, inflammatory verbiage and rhetoric. I looked at the sign in the hall that talked about the decorum when you were to come in here and how you should carry yourself in a professional manner. I looked at each one of those points and he failed on each one of them. The word that he is using is a denigrate. The word denigrate comes from the Latin word denigere, which means to blacken, to dehumanize, dehumanize, or humiliate someone, and that's the verbiage that this man was using. I strongly would urge this council not to swear this person in as a member of your city council and sending a wrong message out to this community. I would implore upon you to take deep consideration of what this person has done, what he has said, and what he's possibly could cause imminent lawlessness by his rhetoric. I want to thank you for hearing me. I feel that you'll do the right thing and that you'll have a consent agenda for the sixth. You could even do a consent agenda tonight on what you would choose to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
My name's Lisa Mantaro Moore and I previously served on this council as the vice mayor. I can't say thank you enough to the members of the NAACP for coming tonight. The fact that a community organization that is based in Modesto representing Stanislaus County comes to our community to protect and serve our public means a great deal to me. I'm very proud to be able to be here tonight with people in the audience for speaking their truth and being very clear and concise in their comments. So thank you, Wendy Byrd, and thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Renee Ledbetter. I am a constituent in District Four. In light of everything that has come out about Mr. Osgood, I also would advise and suggest that the council does consider rescinding the appointment. I know that during the last meeting, I had not known anything about Mr. Osgood that was brought to light in the newspaper and the Modesto Bee or the Series Courier, and I am very offended by his actions and hope that you do consider rescinding this appointment. I do not, as a constituent of District Four, want him representing my district, nor do I want him representing the city of Series. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just curious if after the December sixth, we come up with a deadlock council, like it's happened many times before, and I guess to the tenth, what happens then?
The vacancy could go to special election or potentially just remain vacant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeanne Aikley, Series. We go again. How many meetings are we going to have in the city that things just go berserk? First of all, it seemed like a month ago or a few weeks back, city council wanted to get somebody in there right away. I'd like to know what the city council does when somebody puts their name down to run for a seat. Don't they check anything out? It seems like they had adequate time to try to appoint someone, but did they make adequate time to vet someone and see social media, police record? I mean, there's all kinds of sources out there, you can look about people. Evidently, nobody did their studying at the last minute. I don't condone some of the things, but I'm bright enough to know that, that I think you, the city council, has failed the city because you shouldn't even got us this far. And these upset people here, whatever way they look, either right or wrong, that goes on you. We're just here to voice ourselves, but you guys make the decisions. So you should, you should have the shame on not doing the right thing and finding out the information that you should have found out instead of the last minute and relying on these social media things. You should have got to some more deep facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aikley. Anyone else? Zoom.
Yes, Mayor, Raymond Rodriguez, I will unmute your mic.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Last time I was at a council meeting a few months ago in support of Israel Reese, when he got arrested by a serious police department and his family speaking Spanish, you replied and answered back in Spanish? And that's why I saw John Osgood standing up, going up front and was upset and complaining about the use of Spanish in council meetings. Yes, you probably remember that and he's misinformed, saying that the official language of California is English. But what I'm here for is to support a resign, resignation of the appointment of John Osgood because I saw him, his character is not good for the, for the community. He showed the, his character that he is bigoted, vile, spewing bigoted garbage. And this is a, to his far-right views, it's not going to look really good to your community. Series is diverse. There's like a lot of people with diverse backgrounds in culture and language. And to have John Osgood saying in the seat, in the council seat, that's not going to look good. I mean, if he, if he's on the city council right now and spewing garbage, bigoted garbage, it's not going to look good for the city. That's going to put a lot of fear in people. People are not going to show up for participation and Series is going to be a laughingstock of the entire region because of that count of John Osgood. So please consider, do the right thing, do not let him sit because having John Osgood in city council is going to look really bad for the city. Especially I saw him saying that, you know, saying xenophobic and anti-Spanish thing. That's not going to look good, so please consider, do not let him take that vacant council seat and listen to the people because no John Osgood, please do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next.
Next person is Candace Fernandez, I will unmute your mic. Ms. Fernandez, I'll request to unmute your mic again. I will request a third time to unmute your mic.
Is there anyone else? Okay. The period comment is now closed. Counsel, so back to where we, our discussion. So now we're at the point where we do have to rescind to correct once again, but we're not going to.
It'd be appropriate now for you to consider rescinding the resolution from the last meeting. Just want to assure you, you're proceeding cautiously correctly. We're not, we don't operate on proper rules. We have our own unique set of procedures and we're also governed by the Brown Act, so you couldn't do a consent item.
Okay. So back square, square one, you want a motion to rescind?
I moved to rescind resolution for twenty twenty one, one twenty.
Correct, second. I'm sorry, I did, Casey, I just saw your. Did you push the button as well, sure? Okay, just want to make sure. Second, can I get a roll call?
You're rescinding resolution twenty-one. You're passing. No, we're, I'm sorry, we're rescinding resolution twenty twenty-one seventeen.
Second.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Rhino. Yes. Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
And Mayor Ledbetter.
Hi.
Passes four zero.
Now, counsel, we can have this, we can have the discussion now on what we want to do next. Earlier, we were deciding how we wanted to proceed and I'm recommending on December sixth, we have a special city council meeting on how we can fill this seat. Our recommendation is a.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Apologize, so I was just informed by our planning department that they do have a scheduled matter on December sixth for the planning commission, so it would either have to be before the planning commission meeting or next Monday, which I believe is at the twenty ninth.
I can't do the twenty ninth, I have a visual of that day. It's possible, counsel, that we can do December the seventh?
Well, I would, I would suggest that we do it sooner rather than later.
December first?
Well.
Or earlier, maybe that day, we can do it earlier that day? Okay, no, that sounds better. Instead of six o'clock, we do it at four thirty P M. Is that what we're suggesting?
That would work.
That would work with, that wouldn't interfere with the meeting? Let's wrap it up by six. Okay.
I, I guess I don't understand why we've rescinded the resolution, why we aren't actually discussing tonight. Can do city attorney on how we want to fill the.
Yes, no, you can decide your meeting date and you can further discuss the meeting on the sixth. You just can't take any action for a direct appointment.
Until the sixth or whatever date we come up with.
Until the sixth at four thirty, but you can discuss how you want to do that, who you would want to potentially be a direct appointment, et cetera.
So on my direction, on my request, I request that we do a direct appointment and my suggestion is, Mr. Klein, Mike Klein.
Former council member, came in second.
That's correct.
I would, I would add as well, specifically because when we went over the application, we wound up with two split and I think same thing would happen. I could support direct appointment.
Counsel.
You're asking me to support.
If you, if you're willing.
We're going to have, we haven't decided on the meeting date yet. We're discussing what the meeting is going to be. I have a.
No, we, we, we were talking about December sixth, but then we started talking about the timeframe was, and we couldn't do it at six P M. So we decided four thirty P M. Yeah, four thirty. Yeah, four thirty PM. Want to make sure you're on the same page, Casey. And now we're discussing whether or not you will support a direct appointment of Mike Klein.
Well, just I would throw out potential candidates, but not form a consensus on a particular
Potential candidates, okay, we'll just rephrase that potential candidate. Obviously, we got to wait to see if you would accept.
Exactly. It's like, okay, we want to make a direct appointment. These are some candidates we'd like to consider.
I'm considering Mike Klein. This is the candidate who I am considering for a director. Casey.
Asking me about Mike Klein.
That's correct. How do you feel about?
They will have will have a meeting or we're doing it now.
No, we're just discussing who I'm proposing.
I would, you know, do you have any other names? Do you have any other way you want us to get this meeting together for you, basically?
Okay, I I would still agree with direct appointment versus making applications again.
So do I. Vice Mayor.
Is Mr. Klein, has he been contacted? Would he be interested in this?
I don't know, but I think we could, if we could ask staff to reach out to him.
Yes, you could do that.
How do you feel about that?
So if he's not interested, then what are we going to do?
We could discuss that on on the sixth. At least this way, we we talked about today whether we want to do a direct appointment. That's what my suggestion is.
You have until the 10th.
That's kind of our deadline, the 10th.
So if I'm understanding, we're going to decide on eight, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to be approving the date and we're going to vote to appoint someone on that date. And now, because of the Brown Act and different reasons, Mr. Klein's name's been mentioned, but other people might come forward. Could they contact the attorney?
Contact the city clerk and the city manager.
Okay. And then we have that information prior to December, whatever date we decide on?
Yes.
Okay.
But I hear consensus to to meet on December 6 at four thirty and to contact former council member Klein and then, you know, other people as they step forward, we can bring them forward at that time as well.
Eric, is there any way that we could meet before the sixth? You have to meet on a Monday. Do we meet even say the 30th?
I don't
No?
I have a funeral to go to.
Okay.
The ninth and you went on the twenty ninth and third of a funeral.
Okay.
It's the only reason why I can't do it.
I guess it's
But Vice Mayor, to to your point, today we can discuss the time, day.
You've done that already.
Right, so I understand your concern. I just want to see if I'm going to have your support on. Let's do that. They will figure out a day. The day is the day we already discussed that, so we're sure that everybody's okay with six at four thirty PM. And then that day when we reconvene.
Yes.
We have that larger discussion. That's the direction.
Thanks. Thank you for the direction.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to appointments to the board's commissions. Resolution number twenty twenty one 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 eight, reappointing Brandy Meyer to the Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Advisory Committee for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2025. City clerk, is there anything that you want to mention?
Mayor and council, I'd invite you for you to consider the reappointment of Brandy Meyer to the Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Advisory Committee. I believe she's served for the past sixteen years. County reached out to her to see if she was interested to continue to serve. And yes, she is indeed deserved.
Okay. Counsel, I recommend that we reappoint Ms. Brandy Meyer. Is there anybody else who would like to make comment? Before we continue, let's open up to the public first. Does anybody would like to comment on this issue? Anybody else? Go ahead.
Council members, there's a set procedure the city has on appointing people to committees other than standing committees as well as standing committees. Applications need to be sought from the general public. And the person that's being appointed has to actually submit an application. And I don't think that the city has followed the correct procedures to appoint this person tonight. She might be the best person available, but there may be someone else in the community that's interested in serving on a committee that she has been involved with for either twelve or sixteen years. So I suggest that the city follow its procedures and not just appoint someone without allowing the general public in our city a chance to serve on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would point out, that's for a point. This is not our committee. This is a committee that the city has a member appointed to along with county, city minister, a few other folks.
So are you are you suggesting that we can go ahead and appoint this person directly without going out to applications?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Meyer?
Going up with Mr. Warren, there's actually two positions for the city of series. So if anybody else is interested, other position available as well. Putting everyone
So we have two positions for
We used to have Mr. Shep Shepherd was also a representative, so the Tuolumne River Regional Parks and Advisory Committee would love to have another representative. So whatever happens tonight, I just wanted to let everybody know that, I mean, if somebody else is interested, there is another position that can be filled.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Counsel, what is your direction?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one eighteen.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
And Mayor Lucas.
Hi.
Motion passes four for zero.
Thank you. Moving on. Is there anyone in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon or single roll call vote. I do have some slips here, some requests, or some items to be pulled by John Warren, which we number eight and ends the public hearing, so that'd be number eight. That is it as far as yellow slips. Is there any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom?
No hands up, raise.
Council members, is any council member that like to pull an item? No? Thank you. Can we get a motion to pass a consent calendar?
Move to approve consent calendar items one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven and nine.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
And Mayor Lucas.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
Yeah. Cancellation of December twenty seven twenty one council meeting. Mr. Warren.
Council members, are you all going to be available that week or are you going to be absent? The only reason cancel is if members of the council would not be present. Christmas week this year falls from approximately the twentieth to Saturday, the twenty fifth. Monday morning, the twenty seventh, most businesses are going to go back to work. People traveling for the holidays will have returned generally, unless council members have made plans otherwise. So if all of you are going to be available, or at least three are going to be available, there would be no reason to cancel this particular meeting, and the city business should be conducted.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other members? Anybody on Zoom?
No hands up.
Council members? We get a motion?
I move to approve consent calendar item number eight.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
And Mayor Lucas.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
No unfinished business. Moving on to public hearing. For ten, public hearing to consider the following. Resolution number twenty twenty one one twenty two, adopting the mitigated negative negative declaration prepared for a general plan amendment twenty one zero two GPA and rezone twenty one zero three RZ and a site plan approval for twenty one zero four SPA. Are these all separate items, Mr. Allenan? Or these all is?
Oh, you consider them all together. It'll be presented together and you can also prove them all together. And if you so choose.
Resolution number twenty twenty one one twenty three, adopting a general plan amendment twenty one zero two GPA to change the general plan designation of community commercial CC to high density residential HDR for the property located at twenty one twenty five Moffett Road. Orness number twenty twenty one ten sixty nine, adopting a rezone twenty one zero three RZ to change the zoning designation from community commercial C two, high density multiple family residential R five for the subject property located at twenty one twenty five Moffett Road Home. Mr. Christopher, I believe you have a report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The report will be done by James Michaels, senior planner.
Good evening, Mr. Home. Could you put up page one eighty? There you go. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, all. So just to give you a brief presentation on this. At their August sixteenth twenty twenty one meeting, staff presented the planning commission with the applicant's development proposal, as you see on the screen. It's for a general plan amendment, rezone, and a site plan approval entitlement to construct the twenty eight unit apartment complex located here at twenty one twenty five Moffett Road. The commission was informed that the project first required their recommendation for approval of the general planment and rezone to the city council to allow for the development. Questions that were raised at the planning commission meeting with respect to project parking, emergency access, stormwater and traffic congestion and generation, staff responded to those questions, which are in your staff report on the planning commission minutes of the August sixteenth meeting. After further discussion, the planning commission determined that the conditions of approval that are with the staff report, they appropriately addressed the questions raised at the meeting, and so the commission took final action with a three one vote to approve the site plan approval entitlement and allow construction of the project and its related improvements, as well as recommending that the city council approve the general planment at reason requests. Plan commission acts as only as the advisory body to the city council for general plan amendments and rezon requests. So the site plan approval entitlement is contingent upon the city council approving such requests. So with that said, what the city council is considering tonight, it's the applicant's request for approval of general plan amendment to modify the exist- the existing general plan designation from community commercial to a high density residential and approval of rezone to modify the site's current zoning designation C two community commercial to an R five high density multiple family residential designation. Providing both requests will allow the applicant to proceed with the construction of the project. That concludes staff's presentation.
Counsel, have any questions?
I have a few a few concerns. The first one is the new driveway into this complex. That I'm sure most of us sitting up here go up and down Moffett many times. And with the three, the three-way stop sign that there is now and there's a lot of traffic. And I'm just concerned about the amount of traffic that would come from this complex. That's one of my concerns. My other is we have a new fire truck. I'm not sure how long it is, but I have a concern that when it goes in, and I understand the south best corner, there's a specific fire driveway for them to get out, and it's going to have a gate. But my concern is, as they're coming down that driveway, they have to make that left turn to get to that special gate. Are they going to be able to make that?
All right, to answer your question, we consulted with engineering, associate engineer Sam Royal. Put you on the spot here, Sam.
Well, I think the turning radius would be would be available to make that turn because you have a thirty foot wide driveway and also to the to the north and then to the west, you have a twenty five foot. So the turning radius for that vehicle would be able to do it with the emergency vehicle.
I'm I'm talking about that, the long fire truck that we have, not just the regular fire truck.
Well, I don't have any information about the length of that fire truck, but it's something that we have to study and look at.
This was routed to the fire department, or home, or Mr. Michael?
Yes, it was. It wasn't much in the way of the comment on that.
All right. The other issue I have is there's no onsite visitor parking. And as I said, when you drive down Moffett, the existing apartment complex has vehicles that are parking on Moffett. So if you put a driveway in there, now you're going to have less room for them to park, but then you're going to have the visitors going into new complex jockeying for that same spot. And I would be afraid they're parking right next to the driveway approach that how are they safely enter and exit that? Do they, will they refer part of that by the by the driveway for visibility? Because if a big truck were to park there on three, as you're pulling out that one of those driveways, you can't see.
That is a good question. We'd have to look into that that part of it.
Now, I didn't ask Mr. Home the question, and he did talk to Bertolotti, and they said that currently the apartment complex next door that when the garbage truck goes in and they do their pickup, they have to back out off it, which would be the same for this apartment complex, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions in the council? Any other questions from the council?
I have something else.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I saw in the planning commission minutes that some people spoke up and they wanted to know why driveway couldn't be moved to the south? Why the whole project wasn't flipped?
That was because there is a TID easement to the, along the north end of the property. And essentially what would happen is that they could easily lose parking spaces if they tried to move the building closer on the north end. And so because of that, the applicant has designed it the way that you see. Screen.
But if it were a commercial project, then the driveway would not necessarily be an issue because whatever would go in there commercially would have an access, reciprocal access easement with shopping center next door. So they would be able to go through and, and enter, exit through the shopping center?
That is correct.
Okay, whereas this apartment complex is only going to have one driveway for fifty-six cars potentially.
Potentially, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Sure, I have a, a follow-up question about the fire truck. To the east side, if there are cars parked in the parking spot, it would seem it would be very difficult to even make that turn with a, a normal fire truck. So when the fire department signed off on this, were those parking spots already there?
The parking that, see, none, none of, none of this has been approved except by the planning commission. So on the north end, that staff would have that probably red curb, like no parking zone. So that would allow a, a truck to come along that north end as they're coming in, that, make that turn. But that, that, that north end, they're not going to be allowed to have any parking there on that side, on the north end side of the property.
And the fire, the follow-up on the fire issue, those gates that they have a lock box on them and they open in, so the fire truck is, is that going to be an entrance for the fire truck or an exit?
The, the southwest corner there, that's going to be emergency access only for the fire trucks to go in and out, but yeah, it's just, just designed just for emergency access, just for the fire, or police.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Okay, so now we're going to go ahead, we're going to go ahead and open this to the public. Anyone in the chambers who are attending on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ernie, Ernie Yoshino, architect for this project. And if you could put that back up, we originally designed the project with the driveway, the south end of that property, and then moved the parking to the north. The fire department said that would be too much of an issue to, to turn, go into the property and then up to the north side and around. So we redesigned it to have a straight access and that's when the fire department said that is much better. And as he mentioned, there is an easement on the north side, plus there's apartments right on the other side of the fence and I didn't want to put apartments right back to back. So since that to the south side of the property. Other than that, we met the parking requirements and we just recommended you project. The city is in need of some more apartments. Look forward to, forward with that project. Or here it's part of the company that's going to be building it, so.
I'm sorry, what was your name, by the way? Your name?
My name is Ernie Yoshino.
Ernie, thank you, Ernie, appreciate it.
Good evening, council. So my name is Harinder Tor. I'm the contractor on record. I want to basically put this application forth with the city of Series. Addressed councilwoman Rhino's questions about parking on the street. So what the city has asked us to do is to provide ample parking, which we have done. It might be some overlay that could result in people parking on Moffett Road. But that's a small little constraint. We have actually invited the neighbors to come to our office and address additional concerns, which will, we'll go ahead and mitigate whether it be trees or water flowing over to their properties. Driveway itself, I think it's the correct position. Otherwise, it would basically constrain the amount of units that would go on that property. Thus, because it has a, a front cost of the infrastructure, it could result in close to about seven hundred thousand, would result in not feasible for myself or the owner of the property or the owner of the, of the project to move forward on it. This project, something in its nature was put forth last time. It was basically bailed out, saying that the fees were too high. I think this is the right time for the city to welcome this project into Moffett Road. This will result in basically a substantial housing need that the city of Series needs. I'm behind this project. I've been working on this for about eighteen months now. I don't want to see this fail. If there's any questions, the additional questions that the council has, I would love to address them today.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Any other members of the public who would like to speak?
Hey, Ledbetter at Realty Consultants. I am also representing the client here tonight. And so I just wanted to reinforce what Mr. Tor said about needing housing in Series. We definitely need a lot of intro, introductory housing for people who are just moving out, young, young people. We need apartment housing for people who are downsizing. And I don't think that Series has built a new apartment complex in probably over a decade. And so we definitely need this type of housing in our community, especially with all of the potential business that's coming with the new Walmart and the new business park that's coming right across the street from Walmart. There's so much potential and we need to be able to house the employees that are coming to all of these businesses. So I hope that you're in support of this and we do think that this is going to be a great project for the area. We also believe that the, if it was a commercial spot, as it is in the general plan currently, that it would probably generate more traffic throughout the day for the neighborhood versus probably just certain periods of time where the, the tenants are going maybe to and from work early in the morning and in the afternoon. In the, with the commercial setting, you're going to see traffic all throughout the day versus the, the people who are living there in a residential situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilmembers, John Warren. It takes approximately thirty-five feet for the standard American car to turn around in a circle or to make a U-turn. The driveway is not wide enough to allow to happen. Every vehicle that goes in and out of that complex will not be able to make a U-turn and exit. They're going to have to do a three-point type of turn or back out onto the street. Most of you live in neighborhoods where you see the Amazon trucks come and go on a daily basis. UPS and all kinds of other delivery vehicles. All of those vehicles will have access this apartment complex in the same manner, they have to drive in and they have to drop out. And we certainly don't want to see all of those people backing out onto that street. Moffett carries a lot of traffic. The visibility there is not that good. I don't think it's wise to have a garbage truck back out regardless of doing it currently from the other apartment complex next door. It doesn't mean it has to happen at this one. The lack of available parking for visitors is a big concern. Grandma is going to come to visit and she needs a place to park. She shouldn't have to park in the Richland Shopping Center and walk that great distance to the apartment complex. And then there's the concern about the size of the parking spaces available for the fifty-six vehicles. Some of them are going to be small. And the person coming home that lives in the front apartments are going to want to park up front. They're going to have small cars parking in big car spaces. So when the gentleman comes home at night or the lady with their big pickup truck and they have to park in the back where the small spaces are, they're going to end up taking two spots. And then you're going to have some problems. The handicap parking is designated to be up front. What if there are no handicap people living in the apartment complex? Automatically, you're losing two spaces all at once because no one else can park in those spots. If the handicap person lives in the back of the apartment, they're definitely not going to want to park up front. So there's any number of questions here just because of the parking situation, the lack of the extra spaces need. I think if the property to the south, if the owner of that property sold an extra thirty feet, then you would have a ingress and egress on both sides. And then you could have extra parking along the side going in and going out. And that would take care of some of those problems. Please consider, this is an excellent project. I think it needs consideration. But the parking and the ingress and egress on the Moffett is a big consideration. So possibly something can be done to meet a happy medium and allow this to go forward, but to address those needs. People will get themselves into a tizzy if they come and they can't find a place to park at the place that they live and it will cause domestic problems. And when you get lots of police cars and lots of ambulances all mixed up in that short area there, it's going to be hard for people to get in and out and it's going to be hard for the police department to maintain order in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any members on Zoom?
Hands over.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed and bring it back to the council. Any additional comments?
I, or I do.
I'm sorry, this gentleman had hand raised, but I didn't see. Hold on up, thank you, sir.
Hi, this is Arroyo Vega, I live on twenty-seven O F Street, only house there next door to the mansion. And my wife bought a carport and we got tagged. I want to get that taken out because I went around town and I asked everybody else and they got a permit for having a carport. Nobody said they had one, only me. And they say, well, they never turned you in, because the street is mine. Next out, the other one on the other corner is a mortuary, so I don't know who called. So can I have that appealed?
And then one more time, have what appealed?
Carport.
Carport on this project? So this has nothing to do with this project, you asking a question?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, they, they should have spoken on citizen's communication. No, don't, don't even worry about it. How about you just give us the information and we'll kind of reach out to you, okay with you? It will take in a little bit, we're all, we're all done. And no worries, no worry, Mr. Vega, you're good, thank you. Hey, the, the public hearing is now closed, bring it back to council once again. Councilmember?
Well, I can agree that we do have a housing shortage in Series. I have a greater concern that we're being asked to rezone and make a general plan amendment from commercial to residential when we have issues with, I believe, parking and the traffic that we're going to have coming from this apartment complex. And again, you may need more apartments, but I don't believe that this is a good location. If it were commercial, it may generate more traffic, but they also would have another way to get out through Richland, which the residential area will not be able to do.
Thank you, council member. Any other additional comments from the council?
Yes, I have some. First of all, Mr. Tor, thank you very much for bringing this project to the city. And you are correct, we do need more housing and this will help us to fulfill our commitment to the state housing element and also possibly give some affordable housing. So that's, that's awesome and I'd love to see this in Series. We have no issues with the fire trucks, like was spoken to, spoken about. The fire department approved this and, and with no issues for any of their fire trucks. And the parking space is not an issue. We, they, the last council updated the general plan to, and the municipal code to two spaces per unit and this clearly fulfills that, just as the apartment complex next door has fifty units and a hundred spaces. So the parking issue is not an issue either. It completely goes within what our municipal code says. And as Ms. Ledbetter said, she is correct with intermittent traffic in and out of housing developments and apartment complexes is much different than the traffic that's all day in and out of a commercial or retail development. So it's, this is an easy one for me and I support this project wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
The parking, they may have three parking spots for the apartment next door, I, I don't know, for apartment. But I, I travel that road every day. And in the morning, there's not a parking spot on either side of Moffett from Garrison on the one side all the way, you know, the other side from the apartment complex all the way to the shopping center second entrance. I support the idea of more housing. I, I, I've spoken to people on Seventh Street, they're okay. But I, I am very concerned about the parking and even the traffic. Maybe they should only be, make a right-hand turn out of that parking spot. I know that our staff is very confident and I support the fire department, police, but there's no way in heck that a truck, any size, can make that left-hand turn if they're, they're coming into, from the Richland side, Richland Shopping Center side. If there's cars parked there in the, in the overflow parking area. So those spots need to be no parking. The same is true for coming off Moffett and making a left to leave. There's just no way. Especially if the fire is going to be in the evening, they're parked there. So I, I support the idea of more housing. I support developing vacant lot. But I believe that the parking and the entrance onto and off Moffett, they needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is any additional comments? Would like, would the council like to motion to pass the following?
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three and ten sixty-nine.
Second?
And then introduce the ordinance?
All three. It's all three. Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes?
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
And passes three, one.
Moving on to new business, resolution number twenty twenty-one, one twenty-four, establishing the classification, description, and salary range for the position of payroll technician one and two. Eva, there is someone here to represent and present a staff report, correct?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello, Shirley Human Resources Analyst with the City of Series. So HR is requesting and to reclassify two current positions to a new classification. There is not, this is not a new request, it's just a change, um, the classification for two positions. Currently, the payroll department is operating with the senior account clerk and account clerk two to operate the payroll. Due to recent staff promotions, we now have two vacant positions in our payroll department. On prior recruitments, the finance department has recruited within using the account clerk two and the senior account clerk. At this time, the city will need to conduct an external recruitment. And so in assisting to obtain a greater application pool. Um, the payroll skills, we're focusing more towards payroll skills and not account clerk, uh, one or two. A, a new job description is needed to accurately reflect the duties and that's been attached in the packet. At this time, do we have any questions?
Councilmember?
I, I see under steps following approval, HR will end the classification plan. So I just want to clarify that. On our approved positions for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. That it will show now, if this is approved, senior account clerk confidential will now be zero. And account clerk one, two confidential will be zero.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Anyone from the public? Two?
No hands are raised.
Okay, moving on. Your motion?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-four.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Hi.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Hi.
Decision passes four, zero.
We have no discussion items. Do we have any council member referrals? Seeing none? I have no reports. City council, do you have reports? City manager, do you have any reports?
Not to steal the recreation division's thunder, but just want to remind folks that the opening of Christmas Elaine, the December fourth at Smirna Park. Uh, five to seven P M, uh, parade starts at seven fifteen. Uh, so come, welcome in the holidays with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The attorney?
I'll report, mayor.
Anybody from the department has? Seeing none, is the county supervisor or is representative online? Okay. We are now going to move on to closed session. Public employment pursuant to section five, four, nine, five, seven of the government code. That'll, city manager. But now as you're in this meeting and go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, Council gave directions to staff on the closed session item regarding the city manager.